... Role call. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Here.
Ms. Robiscotta.
Here.
Mr. Grill.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri. Ms. DeVona.
Here.
Public hearing on meeting agenda is devoted to hearing from those persons who might have questions or statements regarding any of the matters listed on the following pages and which the Board will be acting on this evening. If you wish to address the Board, you are asked to sign in on the speaker sheet located on the podium. When your name is called, please wait until you are recognized by the Board President. When recognized, please stand up and clearly state your name and address. All questions or statements must be addressed to the Board President. The Board, through the President, or upon permission of the President, through individual Board members, may or may not respond to your comments. Members of the public are asked to refrain from reading articles out loud at meetings. If there is an article that you would like the Board to know about, please leave a copy with the Board Secretary or Business Administrator who will see to it that it gets distributed to the proper person. Your visit to us this evening will be enjoyable. Okay. Should I read more? "We resolve that the Board of Education of the Township of Lynnhurst, New Jersey, whereas Ronald Grill has served as a member of the Board of Education for the county years 1991." Actually, Mr. Grill has just corrected this. It's 1989 to 2018. "We, as Board members, express our appreciation, his faithfulness, conscientiousness, and industrious achievements, and extend to him our sincere wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future." Should I read the next one? Okay. Who can do the motion? Anyone like to do the motion? Jim? Second? Alan? Okay. "Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Lynnhurst, New Jersey, whereas..." Are we going for role call?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Role call. Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Robiscotta.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Uh, four.
That's all. Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri. Ms. DeVona.
Four.
Uh, role call, let's see. Who are we doing?
Cherish.
Cherish. Number two. "Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Lynnhurst, New Jersey, whereas Sherri Jarvis has served as a member of the Board of Education for the county years 2013 to 2018. We, the members of the Board of Education, express our appreciation for faithful, conscientious, and industrious achievements, and extend to her our sincere wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future." Somebody's gotta make a motion? Not.
So, Jim.
Uh, we didn't hear you, so I'm sorry.
I made a joke.
Josephine Nelson. Cherish Josephine, second. Role call. Ms. Malick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Robiscotta.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeVona.
Four.
"Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Lynnhurst, New Jersey..." "Whereas Josephine Mallick, as a member of the Board of Education for the county years 2011 to 2018. We, the members of the Board of Education, express our appreciation of her faithful, conscientious, and industrious achievements, and extend to her our sincere wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future."
Someone.
Role call. Any second? Mr. Donovan. Ms. Malick.
Yes.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Robiscotta.
Four.
Ms. DeVona.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. DeVona. Four. Now, I wanna say something before I get to the awards. Uh, I know a lot of people don't understand the time and the effort that these people have put forth over the years of service here, and the amount of good that they've done. You know, we hear about a whole bunch of stuff, and I'm sure somebody will get up and say something, but, uh, these people have done tremendous work in the years that they've been on the Board of Education, and I personally want to congratulate them for the great things that they've done and the achievements that they've made. Mr. Grill, I don't know how the hell you ever did all that over here. I have no idea how you ever got through that thing. But, on behalf of the entire Township of Lynnhurst, how many years, you can tell me? Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven years. I think he deserves another round of applause.
Nine-three-year terms.
Nine-three years. Nine. And I don't think you ever put out a sign.
Didn't have to. He didn't have to.
I don't think I need that. Go ahead. "For services..." The plaque reads, "For services rendered to the public schools of Lynnhurst, New Jersey." Some have monuments of stone, some have books written about them, some attain fame on the field of battle, some are renowned for their statesmanship, some acquire greatness through commerce. All these shall pass away. Those who serve our children live into eternity. Their works shall never die. The Lynnhurst Board of Education. Mr. Grill, what does that mean? I'll read the whole thing again. This is for Sherri Jarvis, 213 to 218. "For services rendered to the public schools of Lynnhurst, New Jersey. Some have monuments of stone, some have books written about them." Boy, it's gonna be the worst of the end. "Some attain fame on the field of battle, some are renowned for their statesmanship, some acquire greatness through commerce. All these shall pass away. Those who serve our children will live on into eternity. Their works shall never die." I don't know if Sherri with the Board of Education, but if you ever see the bus she drives, she's all over town running her kids and helping kids from all over the place.
Thank you, school.
Yep.
Did you say "did up"?
Did up! Josephine Mallick. And I don't know how many know that Josephine taught, uh, in Lynnhurst for how many years, Josephine? Twenty-seven years. So, she didn't get enough of the teaching, so she ran for the Board of Education and put in another seven years. Congratulations, Josephine. And I... Would you like me to read the whole thing again for you? "Some have monuments of stone, some have books written about them, some attain fame on the field of battle, some are renowned for their statesmanship, some acquire greatness through commerce. All these shall pass away. Those who serve our children live on into eternity. Their works shall never die." And no true works, words, words shall never die. Josephine, twenty? Well, twenty-seven, twenty-seven years of teaching and seven more years. Would you... Anyone? I'm sure new people would like to say a word before I... I'm so...
Got it?
Yeah. Yeah, right. Whatever. All I wanna say after so many years is that we have great people on the Board, and over the years, I've served with a lot of great people, and that's why, one of the reasons why I stayed so long. Of course, there's always people that aren't so great, but that's a precise point. Everybody that does that, gets elected to do it, uh, they're pretty good, you know? Uh, all I have to say is that I've always tried to think of the children. That was my first priority, always. It wasn't money, obviously, because we did have some problems with money. Money never concerned me that much. There are people on the Board that... That is the most important thing, but to me, it never was. It was the children and making sure that the children had the education that we could give them, no matter what it took. And, and, you know, that's why, that's why I stayed, you know, of course, I got elected all those times too. I don't know if it was luck or just a personality situation, but what I can say is that I wish the new people lots of luck, and make sure, and keep that in mind, that it's here for the kids. My kids haven't been in the school system since, uh, I don't know, the nineties. I do have some, uh, some nephews and nieces that moved me through here, but, uh, it was, you know, again, that's all I have to say, is that that's the first thing, and the first priority, and it was always with me, it was the children. That's all I can say. Thank you.
I'm gonna go with our son, Jim, because I'm still... I mean, I'll be up there, but I'll be on the other side of the chat. But always be a better place to be.
Roll, show, and turn around. So, move. Second? Sherri, one second.
What?
One second. Sherri Jarvis, second. Roll in favor.
As we proceed with the organization meeting, I just wanna let me know that the official results for the Board elections were certified and were published in November's Board Meeting. Public hearing on meeting agenda is devoted to the hearing from those persons who might have questions or statements regarding any of the materials or matters listed on the following pages and which the Board will be acting on this evening. If you wish to address the Board, you are asked to sign in the speaker sheet. There's no sheet, just come back when we're done. Any questions, feel free, okay? When you're organized, please stand up and clearly state your name. If you come up a podium later, all questions or statements must be addressed to the Board President. The Board, through the President, or upon permission of the President, through individual Board members, may or may not respond to your comments. Members of the public are asked to refrain from reading articles out loud at the meetings. If there is any articles that you would like the Board to know about, please have a copy of the Boards with the Board Secretary or Business Administrator who will see to it that it gets to distribute to the proper person. We hope you visit us this evening will be enjoyable and informative. So, at this point, I'll swear in the two new Board members.
Richard Bezuti Jr.
I, Richard Bezuti Jr.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, or affirm, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith, and that will bear true faith, and allegiance, and allegiance to the same, to the same, and to the governments, and to the governments established, established in the United States, in the United States, and this state, and this state, under the authority, under the authority of the people, of the people. So, help me out. Next one.
I.
I. Richard Bezuti Jr.
Richard Bezuti Jr.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, or affirm, or affirm, that I possess...
That I possess qualifications, qualifications described by law, described by law, to the office, to the office of a member of the Board of Education, of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I am...
And that I am...
Not disqualified.
Not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to, pursuant to RS-19, semicolon, four dash one. RS, semicolon, nineteen, dash, four, one. Nor disqualified due to conviction or criminal offense. Nor disqualified due to conviction or crime or offense, which is listed under NJHS-18A, twelve, dash, one. That I will faithfully, impartially, and justifiably, justify, perform, perform all duties, all duties of that office, according to, according to best of my ability, best of my abilities. So, help me out. Roll.
I, Frank...
I, Frank Ferendino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same. And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So, help me out.
So, help me out.
I, Frank Ferendino.
I, Frank Ferendino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I possess...
That I possess...
Qualifications.
Qualifications.
Described by law.
Described by law.
To the office of member.
To the office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
I'll read this part. In pursuit of RS-19, semicolon, four, dash, one. Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of a crime.
Of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in. I'll say this part, NJHS-18A, twelve, dash, one. And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And partially...
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
According to...
According to...
The best of my abilities.
The best of my abilities.
So, help me out. Roll.
Please pull out the Code of Ethics. There'll be two sheets, the Code of Ethics that are listed, and one we have to sign that we read the Code of Ethics. What I want you to do is we're gonna go around with the Code of Ethics and read, by Board Member, each one in rotation. Just read off each one, and go around in a circle, in the order of importance, okay?
According to the New Jersey statutes, a Board Member shall abide by the following public ethics. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws and regulations of the State Board of Education, or orders pertaining to schools. Desire or changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
B, I will make decisions in terms of education and lawfare for children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or other social standing.
C, I will combine my Board action to policy-making, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by it.
D, I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer to schools, but together with my fellow Board members, to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the Board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or parties of the Board of Education, or to the schools' personal gain, or the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community or its school.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendations of the Chief Administration Officer.
I will support protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
Check. I will refer to all complaints to the Chief Administration Officer, and will pack my complaints to the public meetings only after the failure of an administration solution.
And I will include the Code of Ethics within your packet. Please sign that you would not be bound, that you are not threatened, and you will pass those to me. At this time, please write for the flag school, and we start the new Board of Education. For pledge allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for its strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Role call. Mr. Robiscotta.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri.
Present.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Here.
Ms. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Ferendino.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Bezuti.
Here.
Ms. DeVona.
Here.
Presiding, I will receive the notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the Herald, News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, Township Clark, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the Board. At this point in time, we need to nominate, or take nominations for Board President. I make the nomination for Board President.
Eric Keith.
I nominate President DeNobis for Board President. Okay. We have two nominations. Ms. Keith, Ms. Renjanopoulos, who will now take a vote. Those... A role call for those votes for Ms. Keith. Ms. Robiscotta.
Yes.
Ms. Alcieri.
Yes.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Yes.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Ferendino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Bezuti.
Four.
Ms. DeVona.
Four.
I'd like to nominate Jim Donovan as Vice President.
I'd also like to have both of them who are the second nominee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did.
We did. I have to nominate the second nominee. We did, and we're gonna vote on it.
Well, we just have five positive votes. Okay. So, we're gonna vote. Ms. Robiscotta for Chris Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
No.
Ms. Ferendino.
Agreed.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Bezuti.
Yes.
Ms. DeVona.
Agreed.
Eric Keith, Mr. DeVona, Board President? At this time, since the Board has elected a new President, Ms. Keith, I will pass the gavel.
Okay, any Board Member? Any Board Member? Any Board Member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions may also indicate now, and a separate motion for each pre-accepted action will be entertained. We're accepting nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Ms. Alcieri as Vice President. I nominate Jim Donovan as Vice President.
So, uh, role call?
Four.
Three nominations. Yeah, any of them. A, the nomination, Vice President. Sue Alcieri, we're voting on first. Ms. Robiscotta.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Ferendino.
Agreed.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Ms. Bezuti.
Yes.
Ms. DeVona.
Agreed.
You will now take your role call for Ms. Donovan. Ms. Robiscotta.
Yes.
Ms. Alcieri.
Yes.
Ms. Renjanopoulos.
Yes.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Ferendino.
Four.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Mr. Bezuti.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions may also indicate now, and a separate motion for each accepted action will be obtained. Be resolved that the Lynnhurst Board of Education approved the attached New Jersey School Board Association Code of Ethics pursuant to NJSA eighteen A twelve, dash, twenty-one. See attached document.
Roll call for the Code of Ethics, which was run already. Joe Ramascado.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Anjopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Mr. Ferendino.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Mr. Bezuti.
Four.
And Mr. Vona.
Four.
The board recognizes this?
This is for informational purposes, obviously, to new board members, to the rest of the board here, and to the, quite often, the role of the faculty and the vacancy, and officially, that position is made, and we will follow board policy, which requires that the district will post the vacancy, and anybody that's interested in joining the board should submit in writing that request. When that, when that is accomplished, and that request should be sent to the board secretary, and there will also be further information on the website tomorrow. All those interested parties will be reviewed by the board secretary and the board to make a decision whether to go or vote. The goal is that the new person, after being reviewed and selected by the board, by vote, will be, hopefully, appointed on January twenty-eighth, if it's not, if you got the...
Not a motion to adjourn, please?
I make a motion that we are...
Do you have a second? Thank you. All right, so, any... Okay, we don't... Okay, our next meeting will be January twenty-eighth. We haven't posted the dates for the year yet, but just so everyone knows, the next date, our next public meeting is January twenty-eighth, at six thirty. All right, we were adjourned. Sorry, I'll make these to this.
We don't make votes.
You don't? All in favor?